I'd like to call the Bucksport Town Council meeting for 7:00 PM Thursday, January 11, 2018. And I would like to call Mark Eastman and Peter Stewart Hall to do the swearing in. And I'll just go face your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Mr. Mark Eastman.
Just so you know, swear.
Just so you know.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the town of Bucksport.
Of the town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties in the office.
The duties of the office.
As a town council member.
As a town council member.
For the town of Bucksport.
For the town of Bucksport.
Okay, go on please. Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Rabb.
Here.
David Keen, uh, Tim David Keen.
Yeah.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Donovan.
Here.
Robbie Carmichael Jr. And the next business would be the election of a mayor. Do we have a motion?
Motion for Dave Keen. Second.
Do we have any other motions? Do we have a motion to cease?
Motion to cease. Second.
All those in favor?
You can applaud yourself. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Continually.
Is that the booby prize? Okay, item C under, uh, item, uh, annual action by town council is committee assignments. We have a list of them and what we've done in the past is everybody looks at what we have for assignments now and comes back before the next council meeting with their recommendations, whether they want to stay on the committees they're on now or go on to another committee. But if there's a, uh, there's say four people that want to be on any particular committee, it will probably go by seniority, um, so, um, we'll get copies of that.
Everybody's got a copy in their packet.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to mention was last year mid-year, we talked about reducing the number of committees and about whether that's something that we should move forward. Now clearly we have to start this way, but if there's interest in the idea of going to a four-committee system instead of nine, um, I would like to refer this to ordinance so that we could move this forward.
Absolutely.
And get the, those changes at least considered for incorporation. If that's, we, we did this, discuss this and we said that when it came up this year, we would do that. Is that.
Before next meeting?
Yeah, we'll see.
What we can do.
We'll get a couple because I'm already so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item four is presentation of any town council recognitions. We don't have any recognitions, but we, uh, we're gonna have a gentleman come in and give us a presentation on Wilson Hall. I don't see him here yet. Uh, we didn't hear whether he was coming.
He, I did hear. He's supposed to be here.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, uh, go on to item five and when he shows up, we'll go back to that item. So, uh, item five is consider minutes of any previous meetings, town council meetings. Uh, we have minutes for 12/28/2017. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
We have motion, second, approve the minutes for 12/28/2017. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item B is ordinance committee meeting for 12/28/17. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the ordinance committee meeting of 12/28/17. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item six is receive and review correspondence or documents. I don't believe we have any tonight. So, item seven is ordinance to be considered or introduced. Second reading of amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Chapter Two Personnel. Peter, you have anything to say on that?
No, we just have the second reading. Um, it, it reads amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Chapter Two Personnel. To propose ordinance for the purpose of clarifying that health insurance coverage is provided for spouses and eligible dependents and that the coverage is subject to its conditions. And then the amendment reads as follows. And we've added language that says a spouse who has provided with health insurance coverage from their employer that is comparable with health insurance offered by the town may not be enrolled in a health insurance plan from the town unless that premium for the spouse's insurance is 30% higher than the premium from comparable coverage by the town. What this does, and we've talked about in the past, basically mirrors, marries up the, the non-union and, and union language that we talked about in several things in Chapter Two.
Okay, is this something that has to go to a public hearing?
No, it can be adopted. If you've had a second reading, you can adopt this tonight. This is what was discussed at the last meeting, but.
Okay, well, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the second reading of amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Chapter Two Personnel. Anything further from the public? Counsel? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, discussion items for manager's clarification of direction or council discussion on input on issues. Item A being 2016 foreclosure, French property, Route 46. Susan.
There's a letter in, in the packet, um, to Mr. French, who you remember from last year when we went through the discussion of, um, 1861, State Route 46, which went into foreclosure. Um, the count, it made a payment arrangement which was not followed, um, ended up at the council. The council allowed additional time and the 2015 taxes, the oldest year, was cleared. But the 2016 taxes, no payments were made on during this past year and those foreclosed as of December 22nd of 2017. Um, the, the discussion last year was this, that this had happened before and that should it happen again, all years of taxes, cost and interest would be due in order to redeem from foreclosure, which is $2,358.53. And I sent Mr. French a notification on January 8th that those needed to be paid within 30 days or that the council would take action on this foreclosure and that's why it's on your agenda. It hasn't, 30 days has not elapsed, but I'm, I'm letting you know that we're, we're back where we were.
And there's been no, the phone, phone number that says here is out of service and there's been no contact?
Did he receive the, the, the letter?
It was sent certified. I'm not sure if he has signed for it. I don't have the, but the foreclosure letter and the notifications, those have all gone out during the year, the 45-day, there was a 45-day letter sent. There was a letter sent 45 days prior to the 22nd of December notifying of the impending foreclosure of that oldest year of tax. But. We have a number of people who are, whose properties are in states of foreclosure, but virtually all of them or a very high percentage that are, are in arrangements to, to pay them off and they do that. You know, it's, the town's desire isn't to take property, but it becomes a burden on others when it continually goes into foreclosure and there's no attempt to redeem it until it's, um, so, um, this is, this is on here now. I'm letting you know that, you know, the 30 days elapses, that we'll have to decide again what to do on this property. Because as treasurer, I wouldn't make another arrangement. There's no.
And how many days has it been under the 30 now?
Well, it was notified on the 8th.
It'll be our first meeting in February, I think.
But it, it's been foreclosed since the 22nd of December legally. I mean, the town is at ownership. So.
Any further questions from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item B, Streets and Roads Committee update.
Committee met, discussed the, uh, uh, Second Street Extension issue that arose when, uh, it came to light when the sewer line had an issue and determined that there's been a, the term is discontinuance. Abandonment. Abandonment, I'm sorry, abandonment. Uh, Streets, after discussion, Streets and Roads Committee recommendation is that we pursue a legal determination of presumption of abandonment going forward. That'll require a public hearing, so, um, I'm not sure, sue from there what we need to do, but.
Under the scheduling of.
We'll put it down there.
You can introduce it under that.
Any further questions from the public, from the council? No, we'll go on to, uh, item nine, which is agenda items. A is to adopt resolve R.2018-35 to set interest rate for delinquent sewer bills for 2018.
We do this in January of each year. For the coming year, the state set rate is, continues to be 7%. Um, we have set it for the past. This would be the third year at 4%, um, 3% under what's allowable by law. Um, and that would be the interest rate charged on delinquent sewer bills from January 1st of 2018 to December 31st.
How would the council like to proceed?
I have a quick question though. Um, what's our number for that? I mean, is it like tax missing or is it lower than that? As far as people not, being delinquent?
On sewer? It's, it's not, it, it's pretty comparable to what our tax delinquency are. It's not, it's harder to enforce because you can't shut off the sewer. You can foreclose for sewer, but it's.
We're not there with anybody.
We're not there.
Okay, all right. I guess that's what I was looking at this.
Have I made the threat a couple times? Yes. And has it provided payment? Yes, so.
Fair enough. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolve R.2018-35 to set the interest rate for delinquent sewer bills for 2018. Anything from the public? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10, resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections. We did talk about the assignments of, uh, of the, uh, different committees and, uh, we're going to get back to either Susan or myself with, uh, your recommendations on what committees you'd like to be on and we'll address that at the next council meeting. Okay, item 11. We're gonna go back to item four, presentation of any town council recognitions. Uh, we have a, uh, a gentleman here that's going to talk about Wilson Hall project, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. Yeah, flew in from Augusta and stopped at a wake for Arlington's Boston Kane holder, Carolyn Howard. And her daughter told me a story about how, yeah, let's see, they got her home in her, her chair and they watched the ball drop and everybody cheered and turned around and she basically said, hmm, 1918, 2018, I think it's good. So, I just went to sleep.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, uh, great, great, great family, Howard Farm. Yeah, oh, my name is Dick Campbell and appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, just a little update on the legislature. Uh, we do have several bills before us. Uh, not much of, a whole lot of substance. We do, we do have a couple of referendums before us that we haven't cleaned up yet. Uh, we have the expansion of Medicaid, which is gonna be interesting. Marijuana is still sort of perking along and we'll see how that comes out, but we'll probably be, um, addressing that within the first month or so. This is a short session, so, uh, we hope to get out early, uh, maybe in April. But, uh, we thought last year would even be a long season. July was a good time, but October was still there, so. It's pretty interesting. But in terms of Wilson Hall, I'd like to address two things, uh, the building and the business plan. Uh, we've been working on it. Uh, we've been talking to, uh, in terms of the business plan, we've been talking to a lot of different providers. We've been talking to people who, um, have several facilities around the state more large scale. We've been talking to some boutique operators that are interested. One of the things that we all agree upon is that we don't want to compete with anything that's in town. We want to supplement it. In terms of, uh, the services provided on which end of the continuum, uh, we're still researching the market to find out, you know, where the, where the need is. Um, in Turk, in talking to, uh, those who've been in the business for a long time, uh, we're finding that the 24 residents that we talked about might need to be, um, a little bit larger, 36. And, uh, again, we don't know what the level of services will be. Uh, we do wanna complement what's in town, not compete and, um, and help as many as possible. Now, in terms of the, what we expected of 24 with the building, we, we can do 24 residents within the envelope. But if we go to 36, we'll have to expand the envelope. And the thought is to change the main focus of the building, which is the river at this point, to the other side of the building. Probably put an addition on the building if, um, if Jeff and, and the town approves. Uh, probably the building wouldn't be brick or the addition wouldn't be brick, more like the, the older, more historical buildings that are brick with a, an attached clapboard, probably two stories to complement what's there, if not three, to get to the attic level. And we just don't know what the interior arrangement's gonna be. We're working on two sketches. One for, um, a higher level of care on that end of the continuum and then maybe a lower level, more apartment type on the lower end, uh, on the, on the beginning and to supplement what's here in town. Um, we're working with CEI and, uh, we've been, we've scheduled meetings with, uh, local providers, uh, providers of the boutique level, smaller facilities, and, uh, a provider of a larger number of facilities, uh, who grew up in Ellsworth and has some, many facilities in Southern Maine, so he knows the market here. And, uh, we're also talking with the HHS at the state level to find out where their needs are and the, with the experience of those providers in the business and the State of Maine, find a direction where, uh, we can be on the forward end of the, of the service rather than just getting into the business to get into business. Well, we are, uh, looking at, um, the community space for the community organizations, probably, uh, well, it'd be one half of one floor. And then the support facility, uh, for, support functions kitchens and, uh, different things. It's, uh, we don't, we haven't really heard too much from the organizations to find out what they want the space defined as, so we're just defining it as a big, more open space and if, if they have some interest in some built-ins or something for their own purposes and, and, uh, supplies or whatever, we'd do it that way rather than building rooms for the organizations.
Is, is the basement part of your plans at all?
Yes, definitely. Uh, it's more to open it up.
Yeah.
When we did the sardine factory in Bass Harbor, we, it, it had a burn down to the lower level, it had two floors in it. And, uh, what happened was, um, the water level, the hundred year, was about 54 inches off the first floor, so basically it just left us the second floor. So what we did was we, we, um, put a metal joist diaphragm, uh, in below the floor and above the floor, giving you nine feet, eight feet at each level, and then took those, took that center floor out and put garages in. We, we pulled the, the grade back and drove in around the back of the building. That has the potential to open it up. It is to the north, so, but we wanna maintain the southern exposure or the riverside, uh, to more historical. So probably won't do that, but the end, uh, next to the other, uh, cemetery building, we'll probably open that up completely.
Are you comfortable with your plans so far? You, you feel like you're in the.
Yeah, yeah, the business plan is, is, is not very far along. But, you know, the plans on the renovation of the building, I'm very comfortable with. And we don't see any problem with that. Oh, one thing, um, I did get a, a call from, um, Greg Paxton from the Maine Historical and, uh, he mentioned something about a permit for, I mean, an application to do the tower. And I wasn't real clear, it was a real short conversation, but he thought that one might proceed with both at the same time. And I tried to get home today, but, uh, didn't get any clarification what that meant. But, uh, you know, it, it's, it's just a function of what happens to the improvements. Uh, if, if you, if you would improve it, but then what happens to those money? I, I just, I'm not clear on it, but, but he did call me and, and thought you ought to go ahead with it.
That's an application for a grant to do the.
For the tower.
Stipple grant that, um, Brooke was looking.
Oh, okay, that's.
Was talking about that, that the council had granted a five-month agreement so that if, um, the, if this, this project didn't move forward, that the application, it's my understanding the stipple grant applications were November and May and that it, that that would allow for that application to happen because it was my understanding that it's currently closed until, as an application process until.
Yeah, it was a confusing conversation. Uh, it almost seemed to me like the application's in, so, and then the other kind of implied conversation was, do you mind if it keeps going? And, you know, I don't know if they have any place in it, but that's why I've gotta get a clarification from him.
Well, to the best of my knowledge, none has been submitted, so that's.
Yeah, so I, I was really confused about the call.
Because I think Brooke, Brooke did stop that application because of this.
Yeah.
Was gonna, not gonna be.
I thought they were compatible.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was my understanding, so I was quite confused when he called me. But if I hear anything or if you hear anything, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll get it cleared in the next few days anyway.
Have you got enough room for, if you got 36 people there, uh, for visitors come and park?
We're working on that.
That's pretty tight.
Yeah, to the east, there's, there's a pretty good amount of space there.
Yes, yeah.
And 60, 62 feet will double stack perpendicular. There's, there is a pad there.
Right.
And I, I'm not sure what the setback need is, but we're, we're working on that also. That, that also has a, an entrance to the basement right there.
You have a, uh, like, I was gonna say, a date where you're either gonna say go and no go?
Well, I, I was reminded today by one of the, one of the providers that this is a process. So, you don't really know how it's gonna go until it goes, so it's one step at a time. We, we do have our concepts for the 24 residents and we're developing that extra building. So, next time we meet next month, uh, we'll have some plans for you. Probably two sets.
Okay.
For two different models. Sketch plans.
You mind if I ask the public for any?
No.
Public have any questions for Mr. Campbell?
Do you think you're gonna be able to have this in, uh, a concrete situation here by the deadline?
Not sure. Maybe, maybe not, but we're, we're trying. Maybe, maybe not, but we're trying. That's the...
That's based on the business plan, right?
Yeah, yeah. And the original provider, that was extremely motivated and got us going in one end of the continuum, found that her business couldn't support something new, so kind of had to regroup a little bit. We broadened the scope to service both local, regional, and maybe even statewide, if necessary. We just don't know what it's going to be like. But we can put some preliminary business plans, and the building plans are pretty easy. We can get our numbers quite quickly on that. The elevator probably will be an outbound elevator, not within the existing envelope, just to the north to connect it with another building.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the council? And your plan on coming back?
Whatever, the next, the second, next, next month.
Yeah, be the second Thursday of the month.
Meeting time.
Yep, yep. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Sorry I was late.
Oh, sorry. Okay, we're going to go on to item 11, approval of quick claim deeds, discharges of deeds. We have one, Anthony James Lowell, Sr., map five, lot eight, quick claim deed for tax liens for 2013, 14, 15, and 06.
It's 16.
Is it 15 and 16?
It's 15 and 16.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the quick claim deed. Anything further from the council? From the public, from the council. All those in favor?
We could get Campbell, we probably...
A revote?
Yeah, take a vote. All right, we're going to go to item 12, Town Manager's Report. Susan.
Thank you. First, congratulations to Sergeant David Winchester of the Bucksport Police Department. He's been selected to receive a bravery lifesaving award from the Maine Chiefs Association for his efforts in rescuing people at a fire scene last year. He will be receiving the award at a gathering in Portland later in the month, and once that has occurred, we will have a formal recognition here at a council meeting. And it is notable that these awards have gone, from this association have gone to members of the Bucksport Fire and Police Departments for the past three years, so that's outstanding. Second, it's getting near budget season again, and to help with that process, I would like to schedule an extra meeting with the council to do goal setting for the coming year. And since the budget is due to the council by the 12th of March, the sooner this meeting could happen, the better. I had suggested in my report Thursday, February 1st, maybe starting at 6:00, but a Saturday morning is another option. What I'd like is a few hours to have the council sort of identify what its priorities are for this year. I find it much easier to know where we've gone if we had some idea of where we wanted to go in the first place, and identifying these goals up front could be a big help in that process.
No, maybe February 1st. Saturdays I work.
Okay.
I'm out of the country.
We did a 6 to 8, or 6 to 8:30 on maybe February 1st. It could, I think it would be, it's certainly an open meeting, but it's separate from your regular council meeting with just one item on your agenda, and that's goals.
So you're out here, I'll be there?
Yeah, I'm gone, I'm out of the country.
I presume you're coming back?
I don't know.
Could you write down any ideas or thoughts you may have?
Yeah, sure.
And we'll discuss them at that time. So we're talking at 6:00?
Yeah, it would be early, just so it wasn't, you know, 6:00, I would think.
On the 1st.
On the 1st.
All right.
Okay. Another reminder that dog licenses for 2018 must be obtained by January 31st in order to avoid a state-imposed $25 fine. We have the pleasure or displeasure of collecting that and get all the complaints that go along with that, but anyway, the 31st is coming right up. Sewer bills for the last quarter of 2017 have been processed and are going out. The town was notified this week of an increase in the water infrastructure charge billed by Maine Water to Bucksport customers, which equals in the 2018 year, 9.1% of your bill is a, there's a charge on that, on your bill of 9.1% that goes to infrastructure improvement for them. And that charge is increasing by another 2.6 or 7% to 11.6% as of January 1st of 2019. And I called Maine Water about this today because it was accompanied by a statement that said, "And the general water rate is not going up." And so I asked what kind of notification, but it's a different process. This is a legal infrastructure improvement charge, and it allows them to use funds to improve lines, et cetera, but it doesn't go the same way a rate increase does for the water. And this charge, which is going to be 11.6%, can get to 15% before they're required to do a rate increase hearing, because this can be that. And I asked if, you know, this continued charge was applicable to hydrant rental, which is a number this big, and the answer is yes. So I, it's primarily, I'm talking about this because I'm not sure that I completely understood until today, when I asked these questions, exactly what this did and why this charge wasn't, wasn't handled in the same way that a water rate increase, which is, you get notified by the PUC, you have intervenor status, you get a chance to, but not on this. This infrastructure-related costs, you don't. This is for information only, and maybe I'm the only one that cares, but it's, it's up to almost 12% as of January of 19, and it can go to 15 before they're required to do a water rate increase.
Can I? Now, I assume they're doing this to all their customers and all...
Everybody.
Now, does this money go into a...
It goes...
I'm designing it for the town of Bucksport, or are we going to be paying for somebody else's infrastructure down in Portland?
This is the rate for Bucksports.
Yeah, where's that money go?
Bucksport. This is, this is for Bucksport through Maine Water and for, and I'm not saying the water, that Maine Water has not done a good job, because they have. They've done a lot of liner placements, and they're continuing to do that, but any time the percentage of a bill as a surcharge gets close to 15%, that's significant in terms of, especially for some of the bills that, such as hydrant rental, which are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
What was the percentage last year?
The percentage as of, there was a 3.6% increase last year. There was a 2.4% increase the year before.
Right.
And my, they, they were allowed to start charging this in 2014, and that's the first year they did, and it, it's gone up 2.4, 2.6, 3.6, and this year it's, it's now up to 9.1 and going up to 11.6 as of January of 2019. It's just something to be aware of, because when it hits 15, then they would be, they wouldn't be allowed to do this anymore. It would have to go through the rate increase process, and that's a much more public input process.
When I first read it, I thought that was an increase this year on the overall bill.
No, it's a, it was a 3-point-something percent increase last year and another 2-something this year. It's just, for information only, people get this, these things in the mail, this is what it means, and this is what it, this is what it does. The town office and the transfer station will be closed on Monday, January 15th, in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. The committee looking at updating the town website met today and is making progress in design and functionality improvements. It's also working to ensure that the website meets ADA accessibility requirements, which is a requirement since 2006, which many websites don't. It's sort of like when pictures come up, you have to, there has to be a way for something to be heard when they, or captioned, and this whole lot. The school is working on theirs, and the school's IT personnel is here today, too, to make sure that our update is also, meets those ADA accessibility requirements. And we also met today with the owner of the Park Street development to talk about the extension of Park Street to the Broadway extension that was planned back in 2012. We should have information ready for consideration as part of this year's capital budget to move that project forward.
Any questions on any of those issues? If not, we'll go to item 13, set public hearing and hold public hearing, approval of any licenses or permits. Do we have a public hearing we're going to set?
Public hearing on the, on the 2nd street.
And that will be at the next council meeting? We don't have any licenses or... Okay, item 14, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or public. We'll open it up to the public first.
Hey, everyone. Stephen St. Peter Jr., citizen at large. I have a friend of mine from Florida that is very interested in developing tiny, a tiny house village in Bucksport. His name is Joseph Barnett, and he wanted to know if there was any restrictions for tiny homes, something like 300 to 500 square feet, but two floors. He's very interested in putting it on the Williams Pond Road, because he has land out there, and I didn't know if there's any restrictions or anything. Joe's probably watching live right now as we speak, so if I had him on the phone, I'd let him talk to you guys, but just wanted to ask.
That'd be a nice question to ask the code enforcement officer. You know, have any restrictions on tiny homes? Okay.
Well, because you did have that hearing, and I was kind of wondering, can we possibly put that to the planning board?
Coincidentally, the next item we're going to take up has to do with the changes of chapter 5, which is our building ordinance, and within that revision is going to be a proposal to incorporate tiny house standards, which are being addressed at the state level right now, through the Maine Uniform Building and Edco. They're adding an appendix that municipalities can adopt locally if they choose to, so that's going to be my recommendation that we do adopt standards, so we can't allow tiny homes in Bucksport.
Okay, cool.
We can't, yeah, because it's not allowed, according to, in the state has no standards.
So they can't, they're not allowed anywhere in the state right now, or?
I can't say that for sure. There are some places. There are some being built in Maine. It's a local issue, they deal with locally, but because we're a move-back town, there are restrictions that are problematic for tiny houses right now.
By your population, you got to adopt them. Hey, any other discussion items from the public?
Good evening. My name is Chris Johnson. I'm here for Bucksport Heart and Soul. A couple, we had a mistake, I think, on your packet. The last two events we're having on January 18th and 24th, at least, on our community statements discussions, I think in your packet says 5:30 to 7:30, it should be 5:00.
It says 5:00 to 7:00.
Does it say that?
It does.
There was some confusion on that. I also want to remind folks that tomorrow, from 12 to 2, we're having a discussion at the Bucksmills Rod and Gun Club from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. with a potluck lunch. The topics, we'll be working with folks that attend recreation and environment. I'm trying to think if there's anything else we wanted to share with you folks. We invite as many people to come as they can. We are providing a potluck lunch, and as I said, folks can bring it. I don't think that there's anything else, but we're working hard, doing the best we can, and we are still planning on having our process, the Heart and Soul process completed by the end of March. That doesn't end the Heart and Soul effort, but the process itself will be done, and we anticipate being out of the building at the end of March. One other thing, as I look at you, Rob, I wanted, you just reminded me, the group meeting, where all the groups get together, this is an effort that Rob has been leading. We're having to move back the next meeting from February 19th. We can't make it happen then. Unfortunately, I'm embarrassed to say, I think it was March 12th, but we'll work at that, and I'll get the email out, and that's when we try to get all the groups together at the Heart and Soul building, just to talk, just to share experiences, concerns, and it's been very valuable for all of us to be there for that. So as that gets closer, I'll make, and working with Rob, he's been a great leader on that.
I would just emphasize, that they're going to advertise a lot of these different events coming up that you just heard about, but some other ones, February, March timeframe, and just encourage as many of the public to get out and join that group and offer your insight and your thoughts to the process.
It's on the website?
A lot of great work so far.
Thank you. And you've been a great part of that, and we appreciate all that. Thank you very much.
There's a meeting on the 24th, is that?
Of January.
Heart and Soul, is that?
Yes, that will be...
That's at the, I had a meeting with Nancy and you, actually, talking about these upcoming meetings, and it was my understanding that, that the group hopes that as many town counselors as possible...
Thank you, yes.
Could attend that meeting on the 24th.
That will be local economy.
The purpose of that is to sort of better understand what they're going to be bringing to the council in terms of these vision statements that have been done.
It's January 24th?
January 24th, and it's, there's a, part of the Heart and Soul report this week includes the, those statements to, you know, so people can get more familiar with them, but there's a great value in understanding the, the process that Heart and Soul is using to refine these and to get, gain input and to, to better appreciate the hundreds and hundreds of responses that they're going through to get to this. Anyway, so it's on the 24th, and I told both Chris and Nancy that I would make a plea to everyone to try. I have attended some Heart and Soul, but not a lot on purpose, to not be identified as driving this train. This is a non-government effort, and apart from the elected officials, there's no one more identified with government in Bucksport than me. And so we're now at a point where they've gathered information, they've created these vision statements, and I want to recognize all the work that's been done, but I'm really interested in attending that meeting to see this process, which is very interesting in how they distill down to get to where they are.
We'll have a meeting tomorrow with the Broad and Gun Club at noon, and then another one next Thursday at the Bucksport High School from 5:00 to 7:00. Education, you have these in your packet, but for the folks at home, Thursday, next Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Bucksport High School library. And then the last one of this series of meetings will be Wednesday, the 24th, is what you're referring to. That'll be at the Heart and Soul headquarters. And in that one, we'll be talking about local economy, vibrant downtown and town government. Those are the issues that we've gleaned from many of the...
And just so people know, Chris, you don't have to be there for the whole two hours. It's a kind of a free-flowing thing.
It is, but we put you to work.
Right.
And as well as food, but I think some of you have been through some part of this process, and, and this is a different part of the process, but very similar. You know, we're bringing folks in and asking them questions, and have them help us determine what it is that they're seeing there. So it's, it's quite challenging, and it's a lot of fun, actually, but it's a lot of work. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
Yeah, John Paul Delon. I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank, I assume, the Public Works Department. Back in November, during Thanksgiving, I was out at the trails behind the town garage, the Silver Lake Trails, and, you know, it was, it was a mess. I mean, not because of the storm in October. of the storm in October, and, and I stopped, talked to Sue about, you know, if there was a way that, you know, public could get involved and help clean that up, and she was, we'll go out and talk to Jay about it, and before I had a chance to go out and talk to him, I went out to the trails, and everything was cleaned up. I mean, it just amazed me, because, I don't know if any of you are ever out those trails, but it was, it was like a war zone, you know, with the blowdowns, major blowdowns, and I went out, you know, around Christmas time, it was all cleaned up, so, I, you know, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank, I, like I say, I assume it was the Public Works Department who took care of that, and did a very good job, so.
Thank you. Jim?
What was that?
Yeah.
I've been, oh, Jim Morrison, East Bucksport. I've been doing a lot of studying on the, the town code, and in doing so, I discovered some things that were overlooked when it came time to, for the fire chief to retire and, and be reappointed to his position, and I think that these things ought to be addressed. I can give you the numbers and some, kind of an outline on what they are, if you'd like, but if you'd...
I think we got something on the next, the next item, we're setting a date for ordinance committee meeting to discuss chapter two.
Okay.
Which is what you're talking about.
Some of the things are in other chapters, but that's...
And that, because you're invited, you know, the public's invited to those meetings, anyway.
Right.
Okay? We're gonna set that date here shortly. Have anything else, Jim?
Not right now.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? From the council?
Do we have any updates on, other than reading in the paper on the aim property? I know there's a lot of thoughts and questions on what might be going on, I don't know if we have anything, or, no, nothing yet? Okay.
Not quite.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking because the, the questions are out there, and, you know, at some point, there may be some answers, okay?
I, I do wanna, I took a ride up to the ice rink the other day, I don't know how many people have been up there, but it is phenomenal, I mean, the conditions couldn't have been better. Not that I skated, I definitely didn't skate, but even if my hip was good, I couldn't skate right now. It's just, it's a great setting, I saw a family, young family, with three of their kids out, walking out on the skate, the, the rink, and, you know, I looked at it, and my friend that was with me said, wow, this is amazing, your town is, is incredible, these sorts of things that you have, and it's just one of those, I mentioned at the Heart and Soul meeting the other day, it's another jewel that we have, and so, what I do know is, is that the more we can do, sometimes they need help clearing the ice, sometimes they need help with things like that, just like, you know, clearing the trails, as John Paul's, anything we can do to help, help out up there, but it is, I mean, Tim left a great legacy with the skates, and that he gathered in the, in the start of that, and it's continuing on, so encourage people to check it out.
I'd like to follow up on that, I've been talking with Nick, the Y director here, and they're looking into the possibility of a, they call them splash pads, because they have to do some work on the swimming pool issue, anyway, with some drainage and stuff, and this is a, several communities have them there, they're basically for little kids that, you know, may not wanna go actually into the water, but they, like, little, have little, like, palm trees, and you hit a button, and water will come off the palm tree, and water spouts will go all over the place, and they only come on for, like, short periods of time, and it's also, doesn't come on unless there's a certain temperature outside, but they're looking at maybe doing something at the pool, with the, the project they gotta do anyway, that, that maybe this will enhance that, and get more people to come, it'll be an attraction, bring people in from various areas, and, and I think they got plenty of room up there, so, I, you know, I, I was one of the ones that, when the Y first came, that I was questioning whether, you know, it was the right thing for us to do, because again, you know, I grew up with Tim being here, and, but I'll tell you, I, I think the Y's done a heck of a job, and they're really, I mean, with the fitness center up there, what they've done to the ice rink, the different programs they got going on, and, you know, not, you know, Tim did a wonderful job, but, you know, Nick and the Y are really, really bringing the, the town to the front, so, as far as recreation goes.
Public have any other discussion items? If not, we'll go on to item fifteen, which is a, set, a set a date for ordinance committee meeting to discuss chapter two, in reference to retirement and rehiring process for Maine perks, and proposed changes to chapter five.
So, so, well, I'm looking at ordinance and finance both of that day, and what's, how long is the broadband, when is that?
It'll be really quick.
Be really quick?
Yes, sir.
So, what about the other ones, Jeff? You figure an hour for that, maybe, or?
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking start at five, but, or five-thirty. If we go five-thirty for, for ordinance, and then six-thirty maybe for finance?
Six forty-five. Six forty-five, finance.
That'd be plenty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if we start at five-thirty with ordinance, and then go six forty-five with finance, we'll see where we can get. Okay.
Okay, so we got, we got them both on, on that day, right?
Yeah, on the twenty, what, twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth, yeah.
Okay.
And again, I, you know, depending on where council assignments are, we'll make council assignments, I assume we'll keep the same ones until that meeting, and then if they change, we'll go from there, okay?
And we're also gonna have the streets and roads on the public hearing, if, that same day, right?
That's correct. You set that to me, yeah.
Okay, we'll go on to item sixteen, which is adjournment. How would the council like to proceed?
So, move?
Second.
We have a motion and second for adjournment. All of us in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Nice meeting, Mark. Same here.